Okay. Good evening. This is Steve Lionel, Vice Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the September 27th, 2022 zoning board meeting. I'm filling in for Mary Ellen McKay, Chair, who cannot be with us tonight. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNH.gov/AgendaCenter/SelectZoningBoardOfAdjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-0... excuse me, 2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. City staff will monitor a timer visible on the room monitors and Zoom. The Chair will notify speakers as time is expiring. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a Computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when done. Also, please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any motion. The Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members physically in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel. I'm the Vice Chair. And we have Mr. JP Boucher. And also here in the room is an alternate, Jayman Kara. On Zoom, we have Jack Courier, who serves as our clerk. So we have three Board members present in the room, so we have a quorum for holding the meeting. However, Mr. Kara has notified us that he would be recusing himself from the last case, case number five, and that means that we will not have a quorum here in the room. So if one of the other members does not show up in the next few minutes, we're going to have to postpone case number five to a future meeting. In addition to Board members, we have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poyer, zoning coordinator, and I saw Matt.
Matt, he's in and out.
He's in and out. Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director, shows up from time to time. So let us start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. JP Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is present.
Jayman Kara.
Mr. Kara is present.
Jack Courier.
Jack Courier was present on Zoom. I'm on Zoom because of a pre-planned trip away from Nashua, and I'm the only person in the room.
And this is Steve Lionel, and I am present. Since we only have four members present, all members will be voting on each case, except, as I said, for case number five, which it looks like we're going to have to postpone. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you. Okay, I will now read the first case into the record. The owner is Francisco Ramos, Revocable Trust, and Julio Ramos. Applicant is Faustino Ramos and Rebecca Powers, 82 Chestnut Street, Sheet 82, Lot 81. Requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area, 3,116 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 4. Is there somebody here or on Zoom to present the case?
Yes, I am. I'm Rebecca Powers.
Okay, you have 15 minutes, and lead us through your application, what you'd like to do.
Okay, so 82 Chestnut Street is in an urban residence zone, or in RC. Our home is located... give me a minute here, sorry. Located at one of the very few single or one-family dwelling in that area. The properties on both sides of our house, as well as the one across the street, are multifamily dwellings. This is a four-bedroom, one bath, one kitchen unit. Although I think the city still has a showing as a two-bedroom, prior to our family purchasing this property back in 1973, two additional bedrooms have been added. The property has a one-car garage plus a driveway large enough to accommodate several cars for parking. In front of the house, there's a large room. I believe the dimension of the room to be 20 by 22. We are requesting that the city allow us to add a small bathroom and a small kitchen to this one room, which is connected to the hallway that goes upstairs to two small bedrooms upstairs. This area would be used as a separate unit for a family member to live while they assist an aging parent that lives on the other side of the house.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to say right now?
Everything would stay the same. Nothing would be affected as far as the outside of the property. We would just... the large room in front of the house has a large bay window, and we would... we were asking to add a small bathroom and a small kitchen to that room. The room is quite large, so I think the measurements are on 20 to 22 by 22. So that's what we were requesting, that we be allow or given permission to add the small kitchen and the small bathroom, so that that part of the house can be used as a separate unit for a family member.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I was curious if the garage is used actively for parking, or is it used for storage, or what's being used... what's the garage used for lately?
I think mostly storage rather than the parking. But if it was a situation that we needed it for parking, you know, there's just nothing really, and they are... that would prevent us from using it as such.
And how many cars do you park in the driveway?
Three cars.
And is that three side by side, or is there one in front of the other?
So, two side by side, and I think the third one would be kind of parked behind another car.
Okay. I think that's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Boucher.
Just one question. Can you tell me if this portion of Chestnut Street, is this overnight parking allowed?
Is there one?
Overnight parking allowed on your portion of Chestnut Street?
I don't think so. Because Chestnut Street is a one-way, and, you know, not that big of a street.
Okay, thank you.
I'm really not sure about that, but I don't think so. I haven't lived there since I graduated high school. I'm not quite sure, but I don't think so.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the Board? No? Okay. Is there anybody here in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? If there's... is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Is there anybody present in the room who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? No? Is there anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody? Okay, in that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Yes. I'm in support of the application. Again, it's interesting, I didn't know the ownership, but we have a long-time ownership here. Not that that makes a difference, but I think there's definitely an investment in the property there. Again, I think the applicant spoke to the clear facts that it is kind of is a mixed use in that area. There's definitely multifamilies in that area. And the other mitigating fact for me is, is that the number of bedrooms is not increasing. So they're not asking to put in extra bedrooms, so there's really no net difference in the bedrooms. So I think the impact will be minimal. So with that, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Kara.
I also support the application for the reasons Mr. Boucher stated, and I would just add that, you know, looking at the property overall, the density that they're proposing is very consistent with what, you know, the density of the surrounding area. From what I can see, they can park four cars on the property, and that's what's required. So I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm struggling with this application. I recognize it's a dense neighborhood, but it's also a busy and a skinny street. And I've, you know, my witness has been, the parking lot has been full with three cars pretty consistently when I go by late at night. And the request is, you know, almost double what the square footage is. And perhaps that's consistent with the neighborhood, but I don't know that. I mean, there's... I don't see any data on that, so I'm struggling with this, and that's where I'm at, and seeking to hear another opinion on the matter.
Thank you. I am sort of reluctantly in support of the application. The overage in square foot required is a lot, but I know this part of the city, this is not the most crowded section of Chestnut Street, but it is still crowded, that there are a lot of multifamily homes there. And as was stated, there are no more bedrooms being added, so I don't think this significantly increases the usage of the property, so I'm going to support the application. Mr. Boucher, you'll make the motion? Thank you very much.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for the Francisco Ramos Revocable Trust and Julio Ramos owners, Faustino Ramos and Rebecca Powers applicants, 82 Chestnut Street, Sheet 82, Lot 81, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area of 3,116 square feet existing, 6,970 square feet required to convert a single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in the RC Zone, Ward 4, and this was postponed from the September 14th meeting. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, as noted, this is a denser part of the city and Chestnut Street. And again, the net difference in the number of bedrooms, we feel that the... it's not adding more bedrooms, so it wouldn't necessarily be adding more people than what could currently occupy the building there, the whole now. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonable feasible for the applicant to pursue than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kara, for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher, what's in favor?
Mr. Kara, how do you vote?
Mr. Kara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Okay, and Mr. Lionel votes in favor. That's three to one. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, case number two. Owner is Kevin Jeffrey. Applicant is Kevin and Lucy Jeffrey. Address is 230 Pine Street. Sheet 101, Lot 105. Requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum lot area, 9,016 square feet existing, 18,669 square feet required to convert a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling by converting space and attic. This is in the RB Zone, Ward 6. Is there somebody to present this case?
That's me, Lucy Jeffrey.
Okay. So you have 15 minutes, and Rita, walk us through what you'd like to do.
Okay, hello, everyone.
Oh, please give your name and address for the record.
Yes, I am Lucy Jeffrey. About 230 Pine Street, Nashua, 03060. And pot owner and applicant for variance. Oh my goodness, look at that silly drawing. So I had years back permitted with you to make additional living space for me personally up on the third floor, and I live on the first floor, so it was just additional living space for that unit for me to get away and be upstairs. I made something that was all-inclusive, washer dryer, bathroom, little kitchenette, bedroom, very cute. Went through all the regulations and the permits for egress windows and fire escape, and so that was for me to... my little getaway, until I was needed for my elderly mother. And so I have not had use of it. I have not had a lot of escape time. And so I would now like to make it a unit, again, that is all-inclusive, nothing would change on the outside from where it's been for a couple of years now. Parking, nothing on the outside. The fire escape is already there. Parking in the front, on the side, all the same. Everything stays the same. And would just like, it has its own entrance. It would use the door on the left. As the second floor people go up to their unit, then the third would follow that same stairwell and then up into the third floor. So it's all done. It's quite beautiful, and it also would not expand the amount of people that's already in on the first floor. It's all the same people. I just have a young couple that wants to go up and have their own space and would like to turn it into a regular unit.
Anything else to add at this time?
No, I think that's it. I think everything is... I sent pictures, and again, the outside of the home has stayed exactly the same, and yeah, it's actually quite beautiful.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Boucher.
I travel up Pine Street, it's just kind of, you know, from my neighborhood in the Bishop Gerton area, I drive up Pine Street a lot to do business in Nashua, you know, Central part of Nashua, and I'm going other places. And I did recognize your home. Can you tell me if there are other three families nearby? I think there's some close to the intersection, further up at the lights, but what do you know about your neighborhood as far as the multifamily for three family?
Yes, yes, sir. The house, if you're looking at my home, the front of it, two houses up to the left of me is a three-family. The house in between us is a single. It's kind of a nice little mixture. We have another two-family, a couple houses down to... towards the stop sign going towards Bishop Gerton. I have a single-family directly on the other side of me, so I have two single families on either side of me, but the threes and twos are kind of scattered about Pine Street.
Thank you.
Mr. Courier.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you clarify how the third floor is accessed? Is which ward would go in, or staircase?
Yes, if you are facing the house, you would go into the left door, and that would bring up to a staircase and a foyer, which then would be, when you come up the staircase, then you'd go at the top straight ahead, and that would be the second floor unit. And that's all, you know, keyed and private. And then for the attic, instead of going straight in to the second, you'd come up and you'd come into the door for the third unit. So it's in the same foyer. The foyer for the second floor would have one door for the second unit, a door to go up into the attic, and then there's even a door that brings you out into the second floor deck balcony.
Okay, and then, so the door on the far-right side of the house...
Is...
Is that for the first floor?
That's the first floor unit, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And it's funny, because that's called number two. That one is 230 Pine Street, number two. The door on the right, so number two is the first floor. Kind of funny, but I guess it's been like that for a long time. And then the door on the left would be second and third unit.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the Board? Not seeing any. Anybody here in the room wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody? Anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? No? Anybody on Zoom with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody? Okay, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments?
You know, before hearing the case, you know, I was struggling with the overage of this unit. On the other hand, it's a much bigger unit than the ones on the left and right. I appreciate Mr. Boucher asking about which other units are multifamily, and I... it seems that two houses to the left is a three-family, and I think that might be it in the area. So I was kind of on the fence on this. I guess I'm just looking to hear some other opinions, and that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Kara.
I'm also on the fence on this one. From what I could see, the character of the neighborhood is mainly single-family and two-family homes. So I don't think it's a case where this would be more consistent with, you know, the density or the character of the area. However, it is a much larger lot than surrounding properties, which suggests it would support it. It certainly supports the parking. And, you know, to me, it is notable that there doesn't seem to be any opposition from any of the surrounding properties, which is at least an indication that other people in the neighborhood don't feel it's inconsistent with the character. But I am struggling with it and would be interested in hearing other thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I think that, again, I don't think there's a lot of three families in the neighborhood. There's definitely two families. This is one of the larger lots in the neighborhood, as we've talked about already. I think that there's been a certain use of the property to this point, what was approved previously. So again, this is not like it's brand-new. And again, I know we're probably talking, you know, maybe 800 feet away, 1,000 feet away, but as we get towards the light, I mean, we definitely got... we definitely have some larger pieces of property. And also on the left, I know further up the street before the light, we do have that. But again, you know, it's true that there is more single-family homes surrounding this property. But again, I think Mr. Kara makes a good point, is that we don't have anybody here really opposing us or in that fashion. And again, I think this is maybe, you know, again, part of a little bit of the mix, so I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sort of on the fence as well, but I'm leaning towards support because of the items mentioned, that it's a large lot, that the room has already been built, permitted, but although the permit does say not for any kind of accessory dwelling unit, although that's not what's before us today, so I'm probably voting in. So I'm probably voting in favor. Somebody care to make a motion? We'll see where it goes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the area variance for Kevin A. Jeffrey, owner, Kevin A. Lucy Jeffrey, applicant 230 Pine Street, sheet 101, lot 105, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for a minimum lot area of 9,016 square feet existing, 18,669 square feet required to convert a two-family dwelling into a three-family dwelling by converting space in the attic to the area zone word six. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of property. Again, notably, it is a large lot. And then this applicant had been in front of us two years ago to convert the attic into some living space. So there, the space has already been in existence as what was permitted. We find that the benefit sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mancara. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. It's four to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there is a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the planning department if you have any questions. Moving on to case number three. Owner is John LeJulier, 61A Penachuck Street, sheet 49, lot 48. First, requesting the following, a Fisher versus Dover determination, whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variance for lot area and special exception that was denied by the ZBA on July 26th. So we're going to do that first, and then, and that is something that the board decides on its own without any input from the applicant. I have that right? Yes, thank you. So any, Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Again, I think that as looking at this, I thought, you know, I really just thought about this, and I can state that I believe that there is a material difference because this is really, really a different application. Again, it's for living space, but it's, you know, from, you know, we're going from a variance to a special exception. And I think this is a totally different thing. Again, we've had a lot of discussions about ADUs and what, you know, what we believe, what we don't believe about them. But I think in this, for this case and for this time, I believe that it is materially different, different enough to hear the case.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I agree for the same reasons. The two-family was, is not permitted currently under the zoning because it doesn't meet the density. And accessory dwelling unit is under completely different provision of the ordinance, and the density is not an issue. So I believe it's materially different.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Likewise, I believe in general and in this case that a ADU slash special exception is materially different than a variance for additional units. So I agree that it's materially different.
Okay. And I also agree that it is different. So we're going to have a motion, I guess I'll, I can make the motion, that for this case, that a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred. And that, because this is a, an application for an ADU, which is a special exception that is allowed in that zone with the special exception being granted, versus a two-family, which is not allowed in that zone, and that the use is materially different in nature and degree from the variance that was originally denied. So I make a motion to approve the Fisher v. Dover determination. Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Okay. And I, Mr. Leno, vote in favor. Okay, it's four to nothing. We have determined that Fisher v. Dover is met. So now we go on to the special exception. And now we have, let's see, special exception for land use code section 190-15, table 15-1, number three, to allow an accessory dwelling unit in the lower level of the house. This is the area zone word three. So I see we have the applicant here to present the case, and so walk us through what you'd like to do. And give your name and address for the record, please.
John LeJulier, 61A Penachuck Street, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064.
Okay.
For the record, it's 9/27/22 zoning board of adjustment meeting. I believe I meet the Fisher versus Dover determination because I no longer want the variance and special exception that was denied on 7/26/22. At the zoning board of adjustment suggestion, now I only wish to have accessory dwelling unit within my existing single-family house that meet, and I meet all of the criteria to allow an accessory dwelling unit. I remember way back in 1972, I was 10 years old, sharing my room with my younger brother, Peter. Even at six years old, he was quite a builder. I told him someday he would build me a home. In October 2007, my home was completed by my brother, Peter. My father taught my mother how to ride a bike when she was just seven years old in downtown Nashua. They have raised six children in Nashua and now are 87 and 85, respectively. Although they are still living independently, when the inevitable happens and one passes, the other will not be able to live alone. I'm hoping to have the option of my surviving parent to live in my lower level, affording my father and mother his or her own place while being nearby in case of any emergency. As a consequence, this will increase the value of the property, excuse me, which will increase the city's tax base, resulting in a win-win-win situation. I also wish to sincerely thank each and all of you for your voluntary service to the city of Nashville. Thank you.
And as part of the ADU special exception, there are nine special conditions, regulations that you have to agree to. Have you reviewed those?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to all of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Questions from the board? Now, Mr. Courier, Mr. Boucher, any questions?
No, thank you.
Mr. Mancara, any questions?
Could you just walk me through, the ADU is the lower level. How do you access the ADU?
I have two legal means of egress. So there's, the outside access is through the garage. And there's a garage, there's two overhead doors, but there's also a regular, I don't know, 30 or 40-inch door. So the outside would be through the garage. There's also a second that goes to the shared laundry on the first floor. So there's two legal means of egress for the first level. And one of them goes to the garage, which leads to outside door.
Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Not seeing anything? Okay. Is there anybody in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak in favor of this application? We do have a letter in opposition, or at least with questions or concerns. It's written by Tyler Burns at 58 Penachuck Street. Says, "As a resident of Penachuck Street in Nashua, I do have concern about the request to turn 61A Penachuck Street into a two-family dwelling or adding an accessory dwelling unit to the house. My main concern is with parking and obstruction of traffic on this narrow street. Currently and for the past several months, there are two vehicles parked on the street overnight every night. Both owners currently residing at 61A Penachuck Street. If this proposal is allowed, I would question how many more residents would there be living at the residence and where the additional cars would be parked? The parking issue in the past has been an issue with trash pickup several times, as well as the ability to get up and down the street. This residence is the only house on the street that has continuous street parking and has been this way for most of the five years I have lived in the neighborhood. The applicant states that there are currently 12 parking spaces available, yet there are four cars and a boat at this residence, and only two cars and the boat ever park in the driveway. I also believe that being located near the only house that ignores the overnight street parking prohibition can and does have the effect on the surrounding property values." So when we're done, you'll have five minutes to respond to that, sir. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Don't see. Okay. So, Mr. LeJulier, you have five minutes to respond to the concerns from Mr. Burns.
There's no additional parking requested or required. There's, having, my parents have one vehicle. I have two vehicles. There will actually be one less vehicle because I will, our plan is, and you never know what the future happens, that when one of my parents moves in with me, their car will come with them. And right now, it's in my father's name. May have to be switched to my mom's name, or we don't know if it'll be my name. But I now have two vehicles, and I would have just one vehicle. So the vehicle that would be added would be diminished by my having only one vehicle versus two. I have two very old vehicles. I'm in real estate. I need to have a vehicle at any moment of time. And so the reason I have the second vehicle is when one goes, I'll have another for an emergency situation. It's only a temporary situation until economic changes or one of my parents passes.
So you have two vehicles currently, you say, and a boat?
I have a boat, yes.
You have a boat, okay. Because Mr. Burns suggests that you have four vehicles and a boat parked in front of your, or in front or alongside your house.
No, he's confused.
He's not.
Also, I don't know if it matters, but Patricia Klein and I have been talking, and she has, she is working with another alderman, I believe, to talk about overnight parking. But rather than doing spot overnight parking like they've been doing, we've all suggested that all of the area of 03064 be included instead of just Penachuck Street. So they're working on that, but it's going to be more than, it's not going to be in this short time. Also, my comment on parking is that during snow emergencies, you can't have parking there. And there's never anyone parked there during snow emergencies. So I believe we're meeting all the criteria. The overnight parking is something that the aldermen are aware of and are working on. It's just a matter of time before it gets approved.
Okay. Mr. Mancara.
If I could just follow up. How many parking spaces do you have available for your unit? How many cars can you park?
Well, the way it's, the way that it's set up is, is all of the parking is for either unit.
Okay.
So there's 12 parking for both units, shared. It's not like, it's not like if you're in this unit, you have to park behind that building. It's one lot with two buildings. So anywhere where there's crushed stone or peystone is, parking is allowed. And that's in the back of the buildings. And there's 12 parking for two units. So you can, you can say that there's six for each, but, and that's, that's, that's for exterior parking. There's also two-car garage in each unit. So there's 12 exterior, 12, 16 total, if you count the, the 61A does not use their garage for parking. They use it as a auto mechanic.
Thank you.
So you have parking behind the house?
Yes.
Mr. Courier.
Just to follow up also, I think the point of the abutter was that folks from 61A and/or B have been consistently parking in the street overnight. I did see that when I took a look at this property at the last variance request. And it would seem to be reasonable that because there's parking, plenty of parking off the street, that the applicant would just simply not have cars parked on the street overnight. And I didn't know if that's something the applicant would, you know, commit to.
It's not part of the leases. I would have to amend the leases. The leases say parking's not included. So the tenants know that there's no parking included in their lease. And they choose to park where they choose to park. During a snow emergency, I make it very clear that none of them can be out in the street. And none of them have ever been. We've never had that problem.
Sorry, you're referring to tenants. Could you elaborate on that? I didn't understand.
I have a tenant at my home right now. I share my home with a tenant. And I have two golden retriever puppies. I have myself, and I have a tenant in my home.
So you're renting space in your, in your home to this tenant?
Yes. Just one room, a bedroom.
Mr. Falk, can you, do you have any comment on this? I mean, I was reading recently that one of the things that we're supposed to do is ask city staff for their views on each application. And typically, we don't do this unless there's a question, but I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled about this one.
A single-family house can have what's called a rumor, like one rumor. Actually, you can have like up to three rumors in your house. They, I mean, they may or may not pay rent. They just sleep in a bedroom, come and go as they please. It could be a relative, it could be a college friend, it could be brother or sister or anybody.
So this is a law.
The code does permit.
Okay.
What's called rumors.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
So just as a follow-up, so you have a tenant living with you in your home, and that tenant is not allowed to park on the property?
No, the, the, the parking is not addressed either way, whether it's on or off. It's not addressed.
So is the tenant allowed to park on the property?
Yes.
And is that the tenant, is it the tenant who is parking on the street?
Yes.
Well, if there's 16 parking spaces on the property for two units, why is a tenant parking on the street?
I don't know. I think it's because it's closer. They walk in the door and it's, for convenience would be my guess. It's more convenient. They use, he uses the front door, so it's just a short step. Just this, for the same reason why a lot of people park really close to the front door of any business. I generally park far and walk. I'm not the norm. I can request, I can request that not happen. They know that it's, I was told by parking enforcement that at midnight, they'll come and they'll check. They'll, they'll take pictures of cars. Then they don't do anything until 2:00 in the morning, as far as the first ticket goes. At 2:00 in the morning, they ticket up until 6:00 in the morning, and that's the ticketing time. And I, I explain that to my tenants, and if they're at risk, it's a pretty expensive ticket. It's close to $100. And I explain it to them that between the hours of midnight to 6:00 AM, they're not supposed to be on the street. They take the risk, they don't get a ticket, so they do it the next night.
So you have multiple tenants?
No, each time I have a tenant, I explain it to them.
Okay. Thank you.
So you have a tenant, and you earlier this evening explained that you want the ADU for your elderly parents.
One parent.
One elderly parent. One elderly parent. Is this space for the ADU currently being used by the tenant, or or is it not being used for?
Currently, I I just 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 recently, in the past two days, have moved down into that lower level myself. Just recently, past few days. Less than a week.
I have no further questions. Okay. No other questions from the board?
No.
Not seeing anybody? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Mancara, your comments? You may sit down, sir.
You know, at first, I was supportive of the application, but I'm finding myself a little confused slash concerned as to actually what's going on on the property. It should seem as though there's an abundance of parking, but we have testimony suggesting that there isn't. And so that's just leaving me a little bit uncertain. You know, clearly, there's a tenant occupying the property as well, and it sounds as though there is some sort of auto repair business happening next door, which perhaps could account for some of the parking. But I'm just finding myself I'm feeling a little bit uncertain as to what exactly is happening at the property.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
Typically, I think I'd be fine with this application, but the the letter of concern from the abutter regarding parking and my witness, like Mr. Mancara, has me a bit concerned. I think this should be pretty straightforward. I think the owner, who owns 61A and 61B, should be in control of the property, and however that wants to be controlled, perhaps in a lease, say there is no overnight parking. I mean, there's no overnight parking by national law, but there's a demonstration that's been going on for a long time, and I I don't see why the owner just doesn't control it and not permit parking when there's on the street, when there's so much parking off behind the the units. I feel compelled that if I were to approve this, that there'd be a stipulation that the owner will address and not have overnight parking on the street. I I guess another method to address what I think is a problem, which is the overnight parking on the street, is to allow the abutters to call the police over and over, but I'm not that comfortable, you know, going down that path. But I could say it's a matter of enforcement, but I'd rather it be controlled by the owner, I guess, and so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
Just to kind of weed through it all, I know it seems a little confusing, but this is the way I look at it. Facts are is that the current owner has a tenant that is completely within his rights to have, according to city staff, so we have that. The choice of the tenant to park anywhere outside that property, I think that the applicant can certainly, if it was, you know, a rental property, I would say, this is your designated spot. This is where you park when you come park here. I don't think, and I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think that that the applicant control can control anything that happens outside his property. And to me, if the if the tenant or any tenant in that street decides to park in the street, I think it's at their own detriment, and it's it's a case of enforcement. So even though I can understand this letter that we got, and I don't discount it, I think there's probably an issue there. There may be an issue with what's going on in the other unit for use, but that's code enforcement, and that's parking enforcement. Unfortunately, that's what it's down to, and I think that's what it'll take is for several people to continue to call to take care of the problem. So if I go back to what the applicant's asking for, I believe that he he fulfills all the criteria. He's proven, and from the last case, I remember the property. I remember looking at it, and and I do believe that he has the adequate parking that he needs. So I'm going to support the application because, again, I think he has adequate parking. It meets all the criteria, but I don't think that we can stipulate or control what happens outside of his property. And that's kind of my position right now. I do appreciate the the issue. We're trying to solve an issue maybe on the street, but I don't think that's our issue to solve. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Mancara, did I ask you for your comments? I don't remember.
You you did, but, you know, I would just add that the special conditions do require that there is an additional parking space, you know, an off-street parking space for the additional unit for the ADU. So I I would certainly want to make sure that there is, in fact, a space for the ADU if we were to approve it, provided on the property.
Yeah, I I think what's what the regulations are is, in addition, required above the minimum standard for a single-family house. And that's what, two spaces?
Two spaces.
Two?
Two.
Two, okay. And we have testimony that there's more than two spaces available. So I I think that part is met. Thing that that bugs me, although it it I suppose I shouldn't, is that the last time this applicant was here, it was being presented as a to be turned into a two-family for rental income, and and today, we're hearing that it's for for an elderly parent. Now, the the actual use of the ADU is not something that we get concerned about, but the the lack of the inconsistency bothers me a bit. So I'm I'm not really happy with this application. I'd probably lean towards approving it, but I'm still thinking about it. Mr. Boucher.
I do agree with you with your comment about the income, but as we know, if if it had been an ADU originally, they can gain income from an ADU if it was just originally half an ADU, you know? So so I do understand what you're saying, but I think no matter who lives there, ADU or two-family, there's going to be an income stream somehow, you know? And again, whether or not he charges his parents something, but, you know, that may be an agreement that that the applicant has. But again, I think no matter what it is, I think there's always some type of some type of income stream, you know, even when you have family sometimes to maybe sometimes to pay costs. So but I do agree with what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any other comments before we have a motion? Mr. Boucher, would you do the honors, please?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for John Lahulier, owner of 61A Penetuck Street, Sheet 49, Lot 48, requesting requesting a special exception from Land Use Code Section 1A-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the low level of the house, RA Zone Ward 3. We find it is listed in Table 16. We find it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal system. We find that the the special regulations are fulfilled. The applicant tested to the nine accessory dwelling unit conditions. We find it will not impair the integrity of the character of the neighborhood, to be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of the residents. So again, I'm making a motion to approve the special exception.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mancara. Any discussion of the motion?
Uh, yes, actually.
Yep, okay. Mr. Courier.
I just wanted to throw out that, you know, I'll be supporting this motion, maybe perhaps a bit like you, Mr. Lionel, a bit reluctantly, but just over the fact that it's I see it as more of a matter of enforcement for the parking, although I think the the applicant could simply control that themselves. I see it more also an issue of enforcement versus a stipulation, so I'm willing to support it now, and I just wanted to have that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's four to nothing. The special exception is approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact Planning Department if you have any questions. Moving on, case number four. Owner is Douglas Hayes, address 60 Nagel Street, Sheet 107, Lot 70, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-31. One, to encroach five feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback; and two, to encroach five feet into the six-foot required right yard setback. Both requests to construct a 10-foot by 12-foot shed. This is in the RB Zone Ward 6. Do we have somebody, I guess, on Zoom to present the case?
This is Doug Hayes. I'm not on Zoom, I'm on the telephone.
Well, yes, but okay. For us, you're on Zoom, but go ahead. You have 15 minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, and give your your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, my name is Douglas Hayes. I live on 60 Nagel Street.
Lead us through your application.
And anyway, I sent the application in, and I would like to build a shed, a 10-by-12 shed. It abuts two neighbors. I've looked at the neighborhood, and it's very consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I did notify the two people that it'll affect, and they have no issues with it. And so anyway, I think that's all I have to say, except if you read the report, there's there's a little bit more meat to it.
Okay, your your application was pretty complete. Any questions from the board? Did you see something?
No, I'm just talking.
Oh, okay. Any any questions from the board? Mr. Courier, any questions? No?
No.
Anybody here? No, no questions. And there doesn't seem to be anybody from the public else on Zoom, and nor here in the room for this case. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, any comments?
Well, I think the application is complete and thorough with the examples of sheds nearby. I feel that this is a request in this sort of denser-ish neighborhood that we see a lot, and I think it's reasonable. If the six feet were adhered to in the side in the back, you know, the kind of precious backyard space that the owner has would be mitigated, you know? And so I feel that the request to encroach is reasonable. It gives them just enough room to maintain it as needed in the future. And so I think with the good application, clear application, I'm good with it, and I think it meets the criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I I agree, and and I would just add that the size of the shed is really very standard, a 10-by-12, and, you know, having a shed is is certainly, you know, customary accessory building, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I also support the application for the reasons spoken to.
And I, Mr. Lionel, also support the application for the reasons stated. Somebody care to make a motion? Oh, Mr. Mancara is going to make a motion. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to approve the variance request of Douglas A. Hayes for 60 Nagel Street. That's Sheet 107, Lot 70, for a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31. One, to encroach five feet into the required six-foot required setback; and two, to encroach five feet into the six-foot required side yard setback. Both requests in order to construct a 10-by-12 shed in the RB Zone Ward 6. We we find that the variance is necessary to enable the applicant to propose use of the property, mainly that the a shed is a customary accessory building, that it's consistent with other sheds in the neighborhood, many of which also do, you know, not meet the setback requirements currently. And given the size of the yard, the location makes sense to maximize use of the backyard space. We find that it is within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance, will not adversely affect surrounding property values. It's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. That's four to nothing. Congratulations. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact Planning Department if you have any questions. Okay, so we do not. We have been informed that Mr. Mancara is recusing himself from case number five, which means unfortunately, we do not have a quorum anymore in the auditorium. So we will have to defer case number five to the October 11th meeting.
Well, the October 11th meeting is the next meeting. That's okay for the applicants to go. So we'll take we'll recommend our table to the October 11th meeting.
Okay, so we need to take a vote on that, right? Yep, okay. So I will make a motion to table case number five, which is owner is Nashua Performing Arts Center Corporation, City of Nashua, 201 Main Street and 7884 West Pearl Street. Defer this case to the October 11th meeting because we do not have a quorum here in the room. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you for your second. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the table, and also note that I just to clarity, I think this would be the first case on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think that's usually the way it works.
First and second.
Okay. Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Since this does not relate to the merits of the case, Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Good point. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Okay, so this case is tabled to October 11th, and our apologies to the applicant. So that's the last case on the agenda for today. We have minutes from September 14th, where I was not here, despite it saying that on page two, but I've already mentioned that to Mr. Falk.
We missed you.
Any other board members with comments, edits, corrections to the minutes? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 14th.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mancara. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Okay, that's four to nothing. The minutes are approved. We have an agenda for the October 11th meeting. Let's see. This is, yes, October 11th meeting. Does anybody see any items of regional impact on this agenda? Has everybody had a chance to review it?
I'm looking at it right this moment. Sorry, I Kate sent it a bit earlier.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Mancara does not have any regional agenda. Mr. Boucher doesn't. I don't. Wait for Mr. Courier to give his comments.
I do not see any regional.
Okay, so there is no regional impact. We have no rehearing requests, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No.
What?
Got to address this one.
What is?
That's the zoning that we talked.
Were we going to discuss those? I mean, I thought it was just for information.
There's a full board, maybe.
Okay, do you want to wait till a full board? Okay, so we can wait.
The H.B. 1661 issue where we made a slight addition to the bylaws to add in some language. It probably should be read by the full board.
Yeah.
It was introduced at the last meeting, I believe, and the consensus was to wait to this, you know, full full board here.
Okay, so we'll we'll look at that again.
We'll send it in the next package.
Okay, and hopefully. Okay, and hopefully, more people will be able to make it. Okay, all right. Now, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, we adjourned at 7:40.